Okay, tonight we've got several public hearings. The first one we have tonight, it's on our agenda that's been advertised. This is a public hearing of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, in the cities of Chickamauga, Lafette, Lookout Mountain, and Rossville to be held here on January 27, 2022 at 7:00 PM. This is a joint public hearing. We'll ask this time for the clerk to call the role, please, of the board.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Present.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
Thank you. All board members are present. At this time, we're going to ask Alex Smith from the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission and Ethan to come up at this time. They are our partners at the regional commission that's been working on this jointly with us for several months now for the revisions and updates of the comprehensive plan that has to be done every five years. So, fellas, we'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ethan Callan again with the Regional Commission. This is Alex Smith. I'm the Assistant Director of Regional Planning with the Regional Commission. And one of the things that we do is, one of the foundational aspects of the Regional Commission is to provide planning and community development assistance for our region in Northwest Georgia, which is 15 counties and 49 cities. And just incidentally, Chairman Whitfield happens to be the chairman of the Northwest Georgia Regional Council as well. So, it's a pleasure to be here in Walker County tonight. It's been, we've enjoyed the opportunity to get to work with the county and the cities over the last year to put this draft plan together. And essentially what it is, as Chairman mentioned, it is a five-year plan. It's updated every five years. And what set this into motion years ago was the Georgia Planning Act in 1989. And so, most communities in Georgia at that time started to write long-term plans, 10-years and 20-year plans, and they must be updated every five years along the way. And the reason that it's important to make sure that we get that done in a timely fashion is that the state sets deadlines for these plans in order to maintain what's called qualified local government status, which is just a fancy way to say that without that certification from the state, no state or federal dollars or permits of any kind would be able to be awarded to any local government in the state of Georgia without having a plan that is in compliance with the state regulations. Now, the state does not tell us how to plan. They just tell us we have to have a plan and we have to address certain things in the plan for long-term purposes like infrastructure expansions, zoning and land use, transportation, things like that. So, that's what the process is about. And essentially, the Regional Commission, we provide that service as essentially a consultant to author the plan. And we come and facilitate meetings throughout about a year-long process with the county and each of the cities to make sure that we address all the needs and opportunities of each community and put together a good plan that's going to be able to be used for, again, five years. And we come back and update those every five-year period. I think I was working on the last plan here, and I think I've said it a thousand times, I can't believe five years has gone by. It seems like the last two just kind of went by light speed. So, time flies and we're just, again, it's a privilege to be able to work on it. We've got a draft together. It has been advertised, I think, on multiple websites, and copies made available. And we've, of course, got maps and copies of that draft plan here as well. And essentially, the plan draft is completed. This public hearing is in order to take any public comments in regard to the content of that plan. And Mr. Smith here was the planner, project lead over the Walker County plan and handled all the technical authorship and facilitation for that process. So, if anyone would have any comments or questions, Mr. Smith here would be the appropriate one to answer those. So, Mr. Chairman, if there's any questions, we are happy to oblige.
Yeah, this, there's links on our website for this document. This is about a 200-page document now that, since it is a collaborative document of our five cities and county, so when I say five cities, that includes a portion of Fort Ophentorp that's part of our county. So, people don't realize there's some residential area of the city of Fort Ophentorp in Walker County. So, we want everybody to be able to look at that document, provide any feedback and all, but to just give us a roadmap going forward. So, does anyone in the audience have any questions, comments, or any of our city partners? I know we've got a few representatives here tonight from our city partners. Anybody have anything else to add or any questions? Okay, seeing or hearing none. Alex, you're Ethan, any additional words on this, anything?
I think one thing I always like to mention is, you know, at the end of this plan, there's the work program list where we list out capital projects for capital improvement, things like infrastructure and so forth. And so, if y'all happen to see that plan and see some of those projects there, one thing to bear in mind is it's a plan. It is not a binding document that projects that get put into that list are not mandated to have to be finished in that five-year period. The advantage of having them in the plan is that if the county or any of the cities want to apply for some of those state and federal grants to kind of help augment the local finance to be able to kind of accomplish some of those bigger projects, without the projects being in the plan, it puts communities at disadvantage, a less competitive edge, whereas having them in the plan puts it at a much more competitive edge. And so, bear in mind, as you look at the plan and see some of those capital projects, it's not a requirement that those are to be accomplished. It's just, in some cases, part of that is strategic planning and part of it is a wish list for potential opportunities to apply for some of those large state and federal grants to help move things along a little faster.
Ethan, also speak to the process from here through the final phases of this.
Yes, sir. So, after the meeting tonight, that will allow each local government to sign a letter that says they have completed the plan. They have done so to the standards set forth by the state. Everything has been done appropriately. Public input has been received in multiple ways. I think we will survey. Quite a number of responses there, so the public has been engaged in the process. Once those letters have been sent, the Regional Commission, we will go back through, do a final review, and we're going to send this plan to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. That's the part of the state that is responsible for this process. They review the plan. It usually takes several weeks. They'll get it back to us. And our deadline to meet is February 28th of next month to get this plan adopted. And so, be on the lookout sometime next month, probably towards the end of the month. It'll have to be officially adopted in an open meeting. And once that is done, then we are clear for the next five years with the understanding that because it's a plan, it can be updated at any point throughout five years because things can happen and completely shift needs and open up opportunities, things like zoning and land use. So, if anything comes up that we need to change over the next five years, it's not locked into a permanent fixture. All the cities or the county has to do is make a request that we need to make an amendment. We go through a very simple process, and we can amend it at any point. So, also something else to keep in mind.
Good point. Very good. Any other questions? Very good. Appreciate you guys coming up from Rome tonight, and be safe on your travels back.
Thank you.
Okay, with no further action on that, we'll close out this portion of our meeting. At this time, we'll go into our regular scheduled public meeting. We've done our invocation and pledge already. We've had a roll call. At this time, we'll ask the board to approve the agenda that's been presented and was published on our website and Facebook page.
Motion to approve.
We have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board about the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. The next item we have on our agenda is the approval of the minutes for here on January 13th at 7:00 PM. Those are in the packet. This is also available on our website. Is there any questions or concerns of the board of the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented by the clerk?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, approved as presented. Okay, the first public hearing we have is an ordinance, O-0122, for a farm winery exemption to amend certain sections of Chapter 4 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding alcohol beverage. In the packet, this is just a fairly minor change. It says, "An ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 4 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding alcoholic beverages to provide for an effective date to repeal any and all conflicting ordinances and parts of the ordinance to provide for serviceability and to provide for other purposes, whereas Walker County desires to amend its alcoholic beverage code regarding visibility and lighting for state-licensed farm wineries and therefore be it resolved," or, excuse me, "therefore be it ordinated by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County that the Code of Walker County, Georgia is amended as follows. Division 4 Additional Rules and Regulations, Section 4-122 is amended by adding the following sentence to the end of the section, and that wording being, 'This section does not apply to state-licensed farm wineries.'" Division 4 Additional Rules and Regulations in Section 4-138 is deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following. So, when I read this, there's five words that have been added to this section. So, these first couple of sentences are what's there now, but to read it all, so in context. "The sale of alcoholic beverages by the package to be carried off the premises shall be prohibited in any restaurant, cafe, eating place, private club, or in any establishment other than a retail store, grocery store," and this is what's being added, "or state-licensed farm winery, owning a retail license for the sale of alcoholic beverages to the customer off prim," excuse me, "for the consume, consumed of off premises except for the removal of partially consumed bottles of wine as permitted by OCGA 3-6-4. This ordinance is effective immediately upon its adoption. For the ordinance or parts of the ordinance in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Number five, if any sections, calls, sentences, or phrases of this ordinance is held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any count, compared jurisdiction, then said holdings shall in no way affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance." And so, this is the first public hearing on this. There will not be any action on this today. This has been advertised. We will have a public hearing on this today, and then we can take action on this at the next meeting in two weeks. So, is there anyone that would like to speak about this ordinance change? Anyone like to speak? Okay. Any comments or questions of the board? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move over to the next item. We have a request from Terry Tucker and Jeff, let's see, Nickel, for the conditional use variance for property located at 19 East Reed Road, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax map impartial number 0-321-2-015. So, on this East Reed Road conditional use variance, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of this? Anyone in opposition? Okay, hearing or seeing none, is there anyone here tonight that wants to speak in favor of this? You don't have to, but the floor is yours if you'd like to come up.
I think I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm here, you're talking right away.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone, last call on this one, for or against? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the next one. We have a request from DFP LLC for conditional use variance for property located at 901 Glintana Street, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map impartial number 0-133-088A. Is anyone here in opposition for the conditional use variance on Glintana Street? Anyone wants to speak about Glintana Street conditional use variance? Okay, hearing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this?
I'm here. I'm glad to answer any question anyone has. I don't have anything particular I need to speak with if you want to ask a question.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for the gentleman that's making the request? Okay, hearing none, last call, anyone for or against that'd like to speak? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the next one. We have a request from Martin Coffin, Chickamauga Construction, for conditional use variance for property located at 0 Wilson Road, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map impartial number Anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this location of Wilson Road? Any opposition? Okay, hearing none, anyone would like to speak in favor of this at this time? Please come forward.
I'm Mark. Again, as the gentleman stated, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay, anyone have any questions?
Yes, I would like to ask.
Yeah, please come to the front, please, if you would. And for the record, if you'd state your name, please.
Martin Coffin, Chickamauga Construction.
Do you have any engineered plans for soil erosion and stormwater on this?
Yes, sir, I do. We've consulted with CTI engineers, which I believe is the consulting engineer for Walker County. We've had some correspondence on it. What they've stated is that this area, it can be backfilled. It's a flood plain opposite of a floodway because the floodways are, we can't do anything with those. So, this little finger that falls in our property is a flood plain, so it can be backfilled. Before we move forward with any of the, there's survey, hydrographic studies, our SWIP plans, we were directed to go down this route that we're on, and let's put me in front of y'all. And so, once we're approved to use a property as we intend to, then we'll start moving forward with, it's not, CTI won't work with us. They gave us a different engineer whose name I'm drawing a blank on right now, but we'll be using a different firm to put together our SWIP and hydro, the hydrographic study.
Okay. Any other questions?
But the flood plain of your property is in the 500-year flood plain, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Not the 100-year?
Yes, sir.
My main concern was the water backs up across the road and it drains on that property.
Well, I understand.
So, we have to have some kind of plan where we don't back our drain up and back the drain.
That's right. Yeah, I agree.
And we intend to, as soon as this is, as soon as we have a positive result from this, we would like to get in there and clean that out right away. As of now, we've basically stopped doing anything over there. But that, there's a drain that goes right through the property, and it's full of trash and brush and all that. And even on the road, it is full of trash. I'd like to get our, some of our equipment in there and just pull that stuff out and at least get a draining and do that right away.
So, you're going to store equipment and materials there?
Yes, sir.
What type of materials?
Right now, we have some forms, some of our concrete forms. That's about it, maybe some pipe from, just plastic pipe. We're a concrete company, so we just keep our wooden forms there. If we end up with some metal forms, we might keep those there, but we usually just rent those. At this time, it's just plywood and some two-by-fours.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the next one. We have a request from Christie Gallion to rezon property located at 412/454 Ayers Road, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707, from an A1 to an R3, tax map impartial 0-273-008. Anyone here in opposition that'd like to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward. If you would state your name for the record, please.
My name is Herb Lee.
Just one at a time, please. We'll let you all come up.
We're all going to speak. We're going to like to speak.
Okay, that'd be fine if you just want to come up. That's fine. However you want to do it. I just didn't want all of you to think you're okay.
We know you'll have to go to bed at some time.
All right, state your name, please.
My name is Herb Lee, and my wife Susan and Kara are in attendance, along with several of our neighbors. We own an adjoining property at 690 Ayers Road. We've spoken with many of our neighbors, and we are unanimous in opposition to this proposed change. First, we request that the commissioners uphold the expressed intent of the land development regulations specifically to preserve the value of the land and to respect the character of the area. Rezoning from A1 to R3 would dramatically change the types of allowed dwellings to include manufactured housing parks and other multifamily units. This radical change is not in keeping with the character of this area and would give the unfortunate impression that the commission is engaging in spot zoning. Second, the regulations clearly state, and I quote, "While land may be designated for residential use, it does not allow that any housing type," does not follow that any housing type is allowed. Certain areas are limited to one or more housing types in order to preserve the established character of the area. While we're confident that this commission is sensitive to that, despite Mrs. Gallion's stated intentions, once a zoning change is granted, the right runs with the land, and she will not be in control of that forever. Any future property owner could legally implement any allowed use. This proposal would allow at least a threefold increase in density. Once a property owner gets a higher-density zoning, others will line up to get it. Research shows that people tend to maximize the allowable use, whether this is beneficial to the area or not. We bought our home and planted our roots here 13 years ago because this area is beautiful and peaceful. Our neighbors, some of whom have lived here for over 60 years, tell us the same thing. We love this land. Our kids and grandkids love coming out here to enjoy country life with us, and that means a lot to us. We've always felt secure in the belief that our county government will stand behind its zoning and protect this area. If someone wants higher-density zoning, there are other areas of Walker County where that is already available. We ask the commission to protect the low-density, single-family character that makes this area so beautiful, desirable, and valuable. And for the record, I have a petition that a lot of our neighbors have signed.
Okay. Any board members, any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak on this?
Hi, I'm Susan, his wife, and I don't particularly want to speak other than just second what he said, but I would like to ask everybody that came with us to please stand up again. You don't have to say anything, just let your faces be seen. We've all talked about this, and we're all here together to say the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move forward to the next one unless someone else wanted to speak. Okay. All right, the next request from MGM Development to rezon property located at 0 Glintana Street, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, from R3 to C1, tax map impartial 0-133-054. Anyone here that wants to speak in opposition of this on Glintana? Okay, hearing or seeing no one, anyone that wants to speak in favor of this at this time? Yes, sir, please come forward if you would state your name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm, my name is Ty Edwards, president of TG Edwards Construction. I'm the commercial contractor representing Mr. Holland and MGM Properties in this proposal. I have some plans that we've hired AD Engineering, a civil engineering firm, to do some very preliminary plans for this property to convert it from basic account pasture to commercial zoning. I'd like to present to you guys. There's 10 copies here, so I'll survey. Yeah, they're all sticking together, sorry. We've done some preliminary engineering, hiring, again, AD Engineering firm, a civil engineering company, do very preliminary engineering to show kind of what we're trying to do on the property. We're looking to basically put in some storage as well as some small office buildings for the owner who's going to relocate his office to this property. Currently, again, the property is being used as, or was, is a cow pasture. The owner has owned the property now for a few years, so we believe it's conducive to the area. There's some sparse residential around the area, but also to the edge of the property, there's commercial there as well. Junior's Building Supply basically owns property adjoining this property as well. So, we believe that what we're asking for is very conducive to, again, this use and this property. Glad to take any questions.
Would you guys have any problem putting a vegetative buffer?
No, sir. Yeah, we're fine with that. We understand there's going to be at least a 50-foot buffer zone around the property in any residential area. The owner is more than happy to handle any buffer zones that, and again, the civil engineering firm, if this is approved, will pull a full hydrology reports, soil erosion, storm, full sets of plans. We're just trying to make sure this gets approved before we, you know, the owner spends another $25,000 for, you know, civil engineering plans to submit for permit review. So, no, he's perfectly fine with any kind of buffer zones, trees, shrubs, fences as well around areas as required. So, he's more than willing to follow, you know, the zoning and the requirements.
Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, so about half of this destruction is actually in a 100-year flood plain, is that correct?
There's, there is a part of that. It is designated with the gray area that is along the creek on the plant.
And that's the floodway.
That is the floodway, yes, sir.
But the flood plain, about half, over half that property is in a 100-year flood plain?
Yes, sir.
Probably about 60% of it. So, what I'm asking, what I'm asking is your engineers saying you can put these structures in the 100-year flood plain?
Yeah, the engineering plans that are provided are basically based on what is approved by the state to be able to put that in there.
You'd be doing some field work in it.
There will be some field work that'll be required, yes. That will be requested on the plans. Correct, yes.
Like your finished floor would have to be more clear above the 100-year flood plain, sir.
Correct, yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir, there will be.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all of our public hearings at this time, and then you'll see later in our agenda, we'll be taking action items on these public hearing items. The next item on our agenda is a, some unfinished business on a resolution that I will read. This was tabled from our last meeting, a Resolution R-004-22, a Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a chairperson of the Walker County Alcoholic Beverage Commission, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the board is to appoint members and chairpersons to all committees of the board with the approval of the board, and whereas Chairman Shannon K. Whitfield submitted the following appointment to serve as the chairperson of the Walker County Alcoholic Beverage Commission, Harold Hughes, for a term ending on December 31, 2023. Therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of Harold Hughes to serve as the chairperson of Walker County Alcoholic Beverage Commission is approved, so resolved and adopted the 27th day of January 2022. So, therefore, I make the motion that we approve Harold Hughes to the Alcoholic Beverage Commission. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Mr. Hughes is appointed. Okay, the next item, we have a Resolution R-005-22, a Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County for the purpose of extending an existing agreement with the Chickamauga of Walker County for the purpose of extending an existing agreement with the Chickamauga, Fort Ovatork, Lafette, Lookout Mountain, and Rossville pertaining to the 2012 service delivery strategy, whereas the Walker County adopted the service delivery strategy pursuant to the requirements set forth by the General Assembly in House Bill 489, codified OCGA 36-70-20, in which the original document was executed in 1999 and amended in 2012, and whereas pursuant to the provisions of OCGA 3670-28B, Walker County, its municipalities are required to review and revise, if necessary, the county's joint service delivery strategy in conjunction with the updates to the comprehensive plan, which must be updated every 10 years. And whereas Walker County and the municipalities, Chickamauga, Fort Ovatork, Lafette, Lookout Mountain, and Rossville have mutually agreed to extend the current services outlined within the existing service delivery strategy for a period of six months, whereas upon its approval certification, the extension of the service delivery strategy shall be submitted to the state of Georgia for review and approval, and whereas the service delivery strategy is deemed to be a vital tool, ensuring that all citizens of the county and its municipalities are provided necessary public services. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that a six-month extension of the existing agreement with Chickamauga, Fort Ovatork, Lafette, Lookout Mountain, and Rossville is authorized, and said extension should be submitted to the state for review and approval, so resolved and adopted the 27th day of January 2022. Again, this is another item that we work in consultation with a regional commission on. We just need more time as each of our cities work through this and revision. This is done every 10 years, and so this gives us collectively a six-month extension, and each one of those jurisdictions will also be passing resolutions to extend it for six months as well. So, any questions? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this resolution R-006-22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, to adopt the 2017 Commission District Map for the Purpose of Redistricting, whereas the 2020 census has been completed and results therefore have been submitted to the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, whereas such 2020 census reflects that the population of Walker County declined by 1,102,267,654, and whereas Walker County requests and obtain assistance from the Legislative and Congressional Reappointment Office of the Georgia General Assembly to prepare a redistricting plan based on the 2020 census population count, and whereas the reappointment office found that the deviation in population size of the districts are equitable enough for the county commission districts to not be redrawn, and whereas Walker County voters cast ballots in 2020 for the first time in the current commission districts as part of the county's change in its formal, in its form of government, and whereas adopting the existing map will provide continuance representation for the citizens of Walker County. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the board hereby adopt the 2017 map attached exhibit A with no changes as its plan for redistricting based on the 2020 census, so resolved and adopted the 27th day of January 2022. And you have the map, again, this was the new districting map that started on the 2020 election, working with the state office. They have shared with us that everything's in good order, it's within the tolerances that they look for, and this would help keep down confusion of making changes and just keep the districts laid out as they are currently. So, is there any questions or concerns of the board?
No, sir.
Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to adopt this resolution?
Motion to adopt this resolution.
I have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved as presented. Resolution R-007-22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, to revise the per diem expense allowance for trial juries and grand jurors, whereas OCGA Section 1512-7A provides that the grand jury of the county superior court shall set the per diem expense allowance for trial jurors and grand jurors for the county superior court, state court, and any special courts that require the use of jurors, and whereas the expense allowance for trial jurors and grand jurors in Walker County has been $25 per day for many years, whereas Walker County Grand Jury has requested an increase in the per diem expense allowance for the trial jurors and grand jurors, and whereas OCGA Section 1512-7B provides any increase in the expense allowance for jurors and grand jurors set by the juror, the grand jury shall be subject to the approval of their governing body of the county, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the governing body of Walker County. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County increase the expense allowance for trial jurors and grand jurors in the county superior court, state court, and any special courts that require the use of jurors to $35 per day effective February 1, 2022, so resolved and adopted the 27th day of January 2022. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved as presented. Okay, we have a resolution R-008-22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to adopt a member of the Walker County Animal Control Board, whereas OCGA 4A-23A2 provides that animal control board is an authority charged with exercising those powers set forth, and OCGA 4-8-23 is determined by the county governing authority, and whereas Section 6-109A of the Code of Walker County delegates the authority, appoint board, excuse me, appoint members in alternates to the Walker County Animal Control Board, the chairman of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board with the approval of the board, and whereas a vacancy exists on the Animal Control Board among alternates willing to serve, and whereas Chairman Whitfield submitted the following appointment to serve as an alternate member to the Animal Control Board, Shirley Bennett, for the term ending on December 31, 2024, whereas Shirley Bennett is duly qualified to serve as a member of the Animal Control Board and has expressed a willingness to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of Shirley Bennett is approved, so resolved and adopted the 27th day of January 2022. What we've really worked hard to do this year on our board appointments is to collaborate with each of our district commissioners, make sure we try to get as much as equal representation of people serving out of each district area. So, Ms. Shirley was a recommendation from Mr. Blake Moore to serve as an alternate. The board is established with five voting members, but due to the legal requirements, making sure we have enough to have a quorum, we have three alternates that are also listed. And so, that way, if a regular board member is not able to be there, we can hopefully call upon an alternate so we don't have to postpone or delay scheduling, because some cases in this, the animal may be being held at the animal shelter pending the hearing in some cases, and so we don't want to delay that if we don't have to. So, I very much concur with Mr. Blake Moore that Shirley Bennett would be a great member, so I do make the recommendation to the board as a motion that we appoint Ms. Shirley Bennett to the Animal Control Board as an alternate. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Ms. Shirley is appointed. Appreciate her willingness to serve. Okay, our next resolution, Resolution R-009-22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to waive property tax obligations and liabilities associated with the map and tax partial, 4006-014 and 4006-118 and 4006-118A. Whereas the city of Lookout Mountain, Georgia, city, has condemned approximately 12 building structures located on four parcels of property once known as the mountain gardens. The city has spent approximately $155,000 in demolition expense to clean up the property during the past two years, and whereas the real estate property, excuse me, the real property taxes have not been paid on three of the four parcels for the years 2018 through 2021. Fines and penalties have accrued on the real property taxes. The delinquent's real property tax accrued fines and penalties for the year 2018 through 2021 are herein within after collateral referred to as delinquent taxes. The three above referenced partials are identified on map and tax partial number 4006-014, 4006-018, and 4006-018A, and are herein within after collateral referred to as the subject three partials. The taxes are owed to the city, Walker County, and the Board of Education, and whereas Lookout Mountain Conservation, LMC, is a local nonprofit organization whose mission is to conserve real property. LMC desires to purchase the four partials and build a new public park for the benefit of the citizens of the city and the county. Hereas, LMC has raised approximately $135,000 in the past year to purchase the four partials. Even with the funds that LMC has raised, LMC does not have sufficient funds to pay off the total outstanding balance of the mortgage and the taxes that are owed on the four partials. However, LMC will be financially able to purchase the four partials and pay off the mortgage if the city, the county, and the Board of Education waives collections of the taxes that are owed on the subject three partials, and whereas the title owner of the subject three partials is deceased. Collection of the taxes appears doubtful. The city and the Board of Education have agreed to waive collections of the taxes on the subject three partials, and whereas under the circumstances set forth above, it is in the best interest of Walker County to waive the collection of the taxes on the subject three partials, the Walker County, excuse me, the Walker County Tax Commissioner agrees to the waiver of the collection of the taxes. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the Walker County waive collection of the taxes on subject three partials for the year 2018 through 2021, so resolved and adopted the 27th day of January 2022. Again, the city has already invested approximately $155,000 on this to demo these dilapidated structures. The city has waived the taxes, the Board of Education has waived the taxes, and this tax commissioner agrees that it doesn't look that these taxes would ever be collected. So, this would allow this conservancy group to, as a nonprofit, to purchase this and make this into a community park. So, is there any discussion or comment of the board?
Doug, you said that the school board has already, the Board of Education's already agreed to it, the city of Lookout Mountain's already agreed to it?
Yes, and we did get confirmation from the tax commissioner that that did happen. She's gotten those notices where those boards did approve that. So, based off the letter that's attached in the packet, it looks like the amount we're talking about for Walker County, best information we have is $5,669.22 as far as actual taxes, and there was probably a pro-rata share of the fines and penalties of a little over $4,000, but total for the Board of Education, Walker County, the city, taxes and fines collectively is $21,811.04 collectively. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve this resolution.
I have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this next item, I'm not going to read this because it'll really put everybody to sleep. I know some of you are thinking, gosh, these meetings are boring, but this next item here is just our annual contract with the Georgia Public Defense Council. This is a collaboration of our four counties in our judicial circuit, which is Katusa, Jatuga, Dayton, Walker County, where we all collaborate and share the cause for indigent public defense services. This contract has been in place for many years. This organization does a fantastic job. They are great to work with, don't ever hear any complaints or concerns or issues, and they do provide a great service for people that have felonies that they're facing court that are indigent and need legal defense service. So, it would be my recommendation that the board, that we continue to approve this agreement for our citizens in Walker County that do need this service. So, do we have any questions of the board?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we do have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore to approve this. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this agreement to continue this services is approved. This, I'll add one thing, too. This joint collaboration of the counties does help control all the county's costs because they can move staff personnel back and forth, and, did you have something you wanted to add about this?
No, I was just going to make a copy of that.
Okay, so they, helps keep the cost down of collaborating of these services because if they have a heavier trial schedule in one county or another, have people out for sickness or illnesses or leave, they can move people around to keep them having to hire more staff members. So, appreciate what y'all do for us.
Another copy.
All right, now we're into the request we had earlier on our public hearings. This first one is Terry Tucker for conditional use of variance for property located at 19 East Reed Road, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax map impartial number zero dash 321 dash two dash zero one five. Is there anyone here from the planning commission board or staff members that would like to come up?
Chairman.
Okay, our chairman of our planning commission here, Michael Haney. You tell us an overview of this and what the commission's recommendations are, please. You tell us an overview of this and what the commission's recommendations are, please.
Sorry, you got a lot of paper here. Mr. Tucker and Nettles approached, came forward and stated that he would like to continue to operate an indoor firing range. That was Tailspinners and will now be the Shooter's Depot. I think he was trying to sell it out and that he was wanting to continue to allow it to be operated as it was being operated before. And would need to have the conditional use to continue with that business for the new owner.
So it's been a shooting range and change of ownership, so they need a conditional use because a conditional use variance stays with the property owner?
Correct.
So if someone changed ownership, they have to reapply?
Correct.
Okay, so is there any questions, comments from the board on this one?
What was the Planning Commission's recommendation?
Planning Commission's recommendation, that's true, correct.
So Planning Commission's recommendation, it was a Planning Commission on January the twentieth, which was last Tuesday, and their recommendation was to approve as submitted. Any further questions? Hearing none of the board, do we have a motion to approve this as submitted by the Planning Commission?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this one is approved as submitted. Thank you, Mr. Tucker, for being here tonight. Okay, the next one we have is from DFP LLC, property located at nine oh one Glintana Street, Rossville, tax map and parcel number zero dash one thirty-three dash zero eighty-eight A. Michael, please give us an overview of this one.
DFP Properties LLC, Harold Danks came forward and stated that they were approved to build a data processes container and that they would like to build more on the property. There wasn't much discussion, and the board approved, approved a voting unanimous.
Okay, so the Planning Commission voted unanimous to approve this as submitted for a conditional use variance to add additional storage buildings for data processing. Any discussion of the board? Hearing none, is, do we have a motion to approve this as submitted?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this is approved as submitted. Okay, the next one that we have here was a request from Chickamauga Construction for conditional use variance on property located at zero Wilson Road, Rossville, tax map and parcel zero dash one three three dash zero five three A. Michael?
Again, Mr. Kaufman, I believe you spoke with him already, came forward and explained that the property on Wilson Road that he had purchased is zoned residential, but he had liked to store his equipment and materials on the property and maybe build a building later. Board member Michael Hicks asked about the flooding that goes on in the area. Mr. Kaufman stated that he would like to clean out the drainage tile, keep the water flowing. Commissioner Cindy Askew asked about the property being in the flood zone and the aerial, and the aerial looks like dirt has been brought in by Mr. Kaufman and stated that it was brought in by a previous owner. Mr. Kaufman stated it was brought in by a previous owner. There was a discussion on the filling in the flood area and the impact on the properties. He stated that he, that he has consulted with an engineer firm to look into the water issue. So he was talked to about some type of soil erosion plan for the property. The... The board did approve with conditions, approved with the conditions that they, that he'd come back before Planning Commission, before any construction of the buildings or of any buildings.
Okay, so the recommendation of the Planning Commission was to approve this with the condition that before any buildings are constructed, that they come back for review before the Planning Commission.
I got a question. At that time, you know, we'd stated, Mr. Kaufman, that you would get a soil erosion plan and all put in place. So we're going to need to see that contingent on doing this, whether you start your buildings or not. We want, we want, we want to see that plan, that process done, and then you'd be set up for your building when you got ready, but we do probably need to see that on the front end if, if it's approved.
Yes, sir. That, that's our next step.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to make it in a motion that we approve a contingent on seeing engineered soil erosion and stormwater.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore that this is approved with the condition of stormwater plan and soil and erosion plan be submitted for the final condition of approval. Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, and I will sign this, and for the sake of time, I will ask Ms. Becky to add that additional condition since that does vary a little bit from what was submitted because it states clearly about the soil and erosion and the stormwater plan. Okay, very good. Okay, the request to rezone property located at four twelve dash four fifty-four Ayers Road, Chickamauga, from A one to R three, tax map and partial zero dash two seven three zero zero eight. Michael?
Ms. Galen was not present at the meeting. I went ahead and held that item on the agenda. I asked if anybody to speak on the matter. Mr. Herb Lee, Herb Lee came forward and expressed his concerns that if the property is rezoned, it could open up the area to things such as mobile home parks. He also stated that if the property was rezoned, right, the property is rezoned, right, runs, runs with the land. I'm sorry, I don't understand how she had that wording in there. Susan Lee came forward and stated that she was not in favor of the rezon because it could lead to a lot of other damp changes in the area. Ms. Candy Fitzpatrick came forward and stated that she had talked to Ms. Galen and that she told her that she wanted to just bring in a new mobile home. Ms. Frederick asked, was there something else Ms. Galen could not do besides rezon and still be allowed to put a third part, a third home on the property? Cindy Askew, Commissioner Cindy Askew asked, could he replace an existing home with a new one? Planning staff stated that she was asked about the variance and Ms. Galen chose to rezon. There were no other comments from the audience. In other words, Ms. Fitzpatrick asked her, Frederick, sorry, asked her if she wanted to rezon it or if she was looking at just the variance and she wanted the rezon.
Okay, so the Planning Commission's recommendations to the board?
Was to deny.
Was to deny. Any further discussion of this board on this?
I'll make a motion to follow the Planning Commission's recommendation on the denial for the rezon from A one to R three.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Askew to deny the request in support of the Planning Commission's recommendation. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, this, excuse me, all in favor? Excuse me, I got to hit myself. All in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the denial is the verdict. Thank y'all for coming tonight very much. Okay, we have the request from MGM Development for the rezoner property located at zero Glintana Street, Rossville, from R three to C one, tax map and partial zero dash one thirty-three dash zero five four. Michael?
Now, forgive me, you get up here in front of everybody and you start reading this, you get nervous. So, and then you start messing up. And it don't matter how many times you do it, you're still getting nervous and mess up. So if I skip over or miss a word and jump back?
We're patient with you, Mr. Chairman.
MGM Development, Ty Edwards came forward on behalf of MGM Development and stated that they would like to rezon the property to the commercial for the light manufacturing on thirty-eight acres and use it for outdoor storage. He passed out some plans showing that they were, that what they were proposing, which I believe is whichever sitting out. Chairman Haney asked if they have already started moving dirt, and David Brown stated that they had. But they were issued a verbal stop work order previously. Cindy Askew asked why they had started grading without soil erosion plans. Mr. Glenn Holling came forward and stated that they were only taking off the top soil and packing the ground and that they were going to come back and ask for another variance. Cindy Askew stated that the soil and erosion plan should have been done before anything else. David stated that they have been complying with the stop work order. Zack Chapman stated that it looked like they had, there was some small, there was only a small portion of the property that is not in the flood zone area. There were no other comments from the audience. There were a couple of comments about it being in the flood zone and the fact that it was possibly looking at doing spot zoning because there is all around a residential to include that area. A motion was made, there was no second.
Question, I mean interrupt you, a question on the spot zoning. I was just thinking if it borders some commercial, but.
So you need that it bordered in the map.
That property's an obsidian rostamark, a junior's building material property?
That's exactly right.
Yes, it's owned industrial, I checked.
Okay, all right, so it's industrial versus commercial, which is a step up from there. I just, I, that's where I was getting at is what, it, it, it wouldn't be, it, it's not spot zoning when it abuts, even though there's, one's the city, one's the county, it's still, it's a budding commercial or an industrial property. So I believe that would be considered a spot zone, but that's why I wanted to make sure that I was, had it right in my head.
Any further discussion of the board? Any other questions?
You, you were talking about the vote, how, how did they vote?
There was one motion to approve, there was no, there was no motion to, no second to carry the vote, so basically the vote died from there.
So it died for lack of a second.
And no motion to deny.
No motion to deny.
I would like to make a motion to approve the rezon to C one with a stipulation that they put the vegetative buffer along the subterranean.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore that the board approve this with the condition that a vegetation buffer be submitted for approval at the Planning Commission office for the rezoning from an R three to a C one.
And would, would want to add, with, since it is in flood plain with the erosion control plan and all that contingent on, all of that hydrology and all that working out and getting a clean, clean bill of health on there.
So would you like to amend your motion?
Yeah, well, I have the engineered plans for soil erosion and man stormwater.
Okay, so Mr. Blake Moore amends his motion to include not only the vegetation buffer to be approved by the Planning Office, but also proper submittal and approval of a soil and erosion and a stormwater plan. Okay, so do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second under the, under the conundrums that are put in on the motion.
Okay, so we have a second by Commissioner Askew with the conditions that were added in the motion. Any further discussion?
I'm going to vote against this, but I want to say why, just so people understand. I know spot zoning is brought up, I know it's beside industrial, so it's, it's kind of sort of spot zoning, but it's kind of sort of not because industrial's there, I understand both sides of that. But on the, on the thirty-eight acres, there's probably about, I'm, I'm looking at the map, probably five acres of that thirty-eight that aren't in a flood plain. Now, I understand you can build in a five-hundred-year flood plain, you can do a hundred-year flood plain, but it's going to impact something down the line. But the best place to build on that property is right against that subdivision if you look at the flood plain plan. So that concerns me because of the citizens of how those houses, those houses are valued, I would guess at, I don't know, a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars, maybe three hundred thousand dollars now. I don't know what probably houses are going up, but they're, they're pretty nice houses. So I'm voting against it for those reasons. And also to add that the zoning to the north and the west and the south and the east, except for juniors there, which is a very small portion of it, is all zoned R three.
Any further discussion?
I do want to clarify with the owner or the spokesperson that was up here earlier.
Yes, sir.
So on this drawing, this, this drawing that you got, that all this where we're showing this storage and all, that, that's the area that will be, that will have to be filled?
Correct, yes, sir.
Right, that, that's right, okay. So, yeah, and so like, like I said, so now it's in a flood plain that's on R three, so we're not going to build any houses in there.
I mean, I will say, I will say, I've had one complaint on this guy in a year, and I called David Brown, he went out there, and in ten days, the guy had, it was about porta potties, had them removed. He's very willing to work with the county, and he's willing to invest a lot of money in my business.
So that's a bit probably supportive.
I, I understand that, and, and trust me, I do, but we're voting to rezon it to C one. So if we rezoned the map to C one, it's all approved, and then, and I'm not saying you will type, but let's say the developer comes and says, well, we changed our mind, we're going to sell it to whoever. I mean, we're, we're not voting what goes there, we're voting to change that property to C one, and if C one, until somebody changes it to anything else, so surrounding that C one zone, with the exception of juniors there, a small portion of it, is all R three. That, that's why I'm voting against it, I mean, I understand the point.
Yeah, I, I also understand he's willing to move his business, part of it's there, he's wanting to move the rest from Chattanooga, so he's a Rossville native, and I know he's one to do right by the Rossville people.
Additional discussion? So we do have a, a motion with conditions, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed, same side? Okay, so it's three to one to approve with conditions. Thank you. Okay, at this time of our meeting, thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
We do ask if there's any citizen that would like to speak and address the board and staff. We would allow you up to five minutes to speak. We request and prefer that you keep your comments to things about Walker County that we can have a, an impact on because you've only got five minutes and we can't solve Washington. So use your time wisely. So is there anyone here tonight that would like to come up and speak before the board? Yes, ma'am, come on up, please. And if you would, why don't you get up here to the microphone? We ask that you state your name for the record and we'll start your five minutes.
Okay, it's not as long as it looks. My name is Wendy Caswell, and I moved to Walker County in nineteen ninety-seven. I'm here to thank you. When I moved here, the shelter system was lacking in so many ways, the animal shelter. I've been involved with animal welfare and rescue most of my adult life, here with Tallulah McGee, with the Hand Foundation, Jimmy Stewart with DART, Reenie Stafford with the East Tennessee Alliance for Animals, and recently I've served on the Board of the Humane Educational Society in Chattanooga. I've lost count of all the dogs and puppies that I have fostered because of the strays that are in Walker County and Hamilton County and these organizations. It is an emotional and financial burden when your residents have to take up helping, say, these animals. And I get several phone calls about strays in Walker County and Hamilton County. But I would like to tell you that when somebody calls me and says that they're from Walker County, I breathe a sigh of relief because y'all have done a really great job of turning the shelter system around, and I want to thank you about, for that. Emily Sattler and, and her staff are wonderful at assessing these animals and doing what's best for that animal and the community. assessing these animals and doing what's best for that animal and the community. And when so many shelters are euthanizing for space, I want to thank you for supporting her in her efforts in saving as many animals as possible. I often have said in the last several, probably year and a half, if Walker County can do it, how great would it be that so many of these other shelters could do it? And that hopefully it'll be one that we can emulate to other shelters about how Walker County has turned it around. And I just wanted to stand up here and tell you how grateful I was for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice of you to come tonight. Thank you for speaking. Okay, anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Yes, ma'am, come up, please. And you get the microphone, please state your name.
Sure. My name is Kay Baker, and I am here also to speak in support of the Walker County Animal Shelter. I originally came from Atlanta, and in two thousand and five, I became involved in animal rescue, animal shelters. So I've been in the, the business as a volunteer for many, many years. I've fostered, not as many as Ms. Caswell, but I've fostered puppies. I've failed as a foster. So we have a lot of dogs at our house. I also served on the board of the Humane Educational Society for five years. I left in May or June of two thousand and twenty-one, so I was on the board for about five years. I've worked with multiple other rescue groups and shelters around the South. What, and, and as a personal note, I used to work at the DA's office in Lookout Mountain for about six years. I left in two thousand and fifteen to open my own practice, my own business. But I met Emily Sadler through her mother Jane, who worked with me in the Coteau County office. And Emily and I had a shared bond because of our love for animals. She's been involved in animal rescue for many years before she came to the shelter in Walker County. I, as Ms. Caswell stated, I breathed a sigh of relief when I heard that Emily was going to be the new director because she has connections, she has ideas, she has energy, and she spends a lot of it trying to find the best homes for animals that end up in her care at the Walker County shelter. The South has a, a problem that the North does not have, and this isn't just specific to Walker County. It's, it's Georgia, it's Tennessee, it's South Carolina, Georgia, Mississippi, Alabama, Texas. The, there's an abundant, overabundance of supply of animals that are abandoned, surrendered by owners or just strays, and there's not enough demand. The North, and we know some reasons why, but this is not for that conversation, but the North does not have that problem. They have shelters and people up north that are begging for, for animals. So we have a, a challenge here in the South. And one of the ways that I like what Emily's doing is the protocols that she has put in place for, let's say, her adoption protocols. If you come to the shelter and your family wants to adopt Barney, but you have small children and cats, and Emily's team does an assessment and a temperament testing on all the animals that come to the shelter. So they know, well, Barney doesn't like two-year-olds pulling on his tail, or Barney really doesn't like cats. And so the staff knows that, and, and it would be irresponsible for them to adopt an animal to that environment and a liability to the county as well. Because if Barney then turns on a cat and a child is in the way, the child could be injured. So there are adoption protocols that they use that I really, really appreciate. At HES, the Humane Society, we did the same thing. We had adoption ambassadors, and we made sure that the conditions in your home were conducive to the animal that you were wanting to adopt. And if that animal wasn't conducive, they would encourage you to look at, you know, the other animals that they had in their care. So what they do at the Walker County shelter is, is top shelf in the animal welfare and animal shelter world. The spay neuter protocols that she has in place, if she has an animal that comes to her, or, excuse me, a stray, and the, the owner comes forward and says, well, that's my dog Jake, but Jake is not neutered, she offers to the owner, well, we can neuter Jake, we can get him rabies vaccination, vaccinated, which is required by state law, temp, all, all of his vaccinations, bordatello, all of those things, and a vet visit to find out, does Jake have any other issues? And if the person can't afford the eighty dollars they fundraised to cover that cost, because spay neuter is one of the ways that we can decrease the overpopulation of animals. But Emily's group can't do it alone. So it, it's, it's a South issue, and we're, you know, we all, all of us that are in the, that are volunteer in this area, we, we do our best to encourage spay neuter. But that's what, that's one of the things that Emily is doing with her staff to help combat the overpopulation problem. Because when you have too many animals, too many dogs running at large, and there are a lot of them, they cause accidents in the street, they get on your property, they might eat your chickens. That's an expense to you as the owner. If you have an accident because you're trying to avoid a stray animal, that's an expense to you. And I think your constituents appreciate that. And so in a nutshell, I'm out of time, but I one hundred percent support what you guys have done in allowing Emily to change up some of the programs to make them more conducive to, to the problems that we have in the South. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak tonight?
If you don't mind, indulge me for just a moment.
Yes.
My name is Harold Danks, and you did approve a conditional use variance for me tonight, and I appreciate that. I'm learning the processes that we're going through here, and it has occurred to me through the last couple of weeks that I probably didn't even need to apply for that since I already had it. But what I really wanted to do is just thank you guys for, number one, running a great meeting. It's just really impressive, and I appreciate that. The other thing is, I, I did want to express my support for the approval you gave to MGM developers. For us, that's important because of our property being presently in a flood way, not a flood plain, and it will allow us to expand our operations, not only on our property, where we're able to do it through the use of, of special construction, but also be able to possibly use their property to support what we're doing. So I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate that, and I apologize for not speaking up earlier.
That's fine. Thank you for being here and speaking. Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else that'd like to speak? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to our next item on our agenda, and it's, we always like to take the time each meeting to let our, each of our commissioners, if they have anything they'd like to speak on or any additional topics. So we'll start with District One, Commissioner Blake Moore.
Just appreciate everybody coming out, getting involved. If I can ever be of assistance to you, just please call, text, email. If I don't get with you, I'll get, I'll get right back with you if I don't pick up. I'm glad to help in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Askew.
Thanks for the participation. Great crowd. You know, it helps us do our job by hearing what the wants and needs are of the community. We're not always going to be able to, to agree on it. We're not always going to be able to give you what you want, but it helps us tremendously to have the participation that we have. And I'd like to thank you for that and piggyback off of Robert once again. Call, text, or email, and we'll, if there's anything we can do to help you. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Hawke.
Yeah, I'd like to pass also condolences to somebody who passed away in Walker County this week. Mr. Fred Ray died. He was an educator in the Walker County school system for over thirty years. So if you were educated in Walker County at West LaFet or LaFet Middle School, in the fifties to the eighties, you probably knew Mr. Ray. He was a great educator, touched a lot of people's lives, and he left us this week, but Mr. Great Person to leave our community. And also shout out to the LaFet Raptors, their undefeated basketball team, having a great year this year.
Mr. Stoltz.
Mr. Ray was a fine man, excellent, excellent teacher, and we lost a, a great guy. I want to thank everyone for coming out. Ms. Caswell, Ms. Baker, thanks for the nice comments. It's nice to hear that. So thank y'all. And again, if I can be of any assistance to anyone, you can call, text, email me. I would also like to mention that the Cedar Grove Community Center on West Cove Road is going to host a Wild Game Supper, February the fifth at six o'clock, and the admission is twelve dollars. So come out and enjoy some great food. Here's some fish tails that may or may not be true, especially if me or Terrier are having them. And so just come and enjoy some fine fellowship and food. Thank y'all.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I would. When Brian mentioned that, I, I would like to send out condolences as well to Lee Powell's family, another employee that we, that we lost to this, this terrible COVID. And Lee was a lifetime friend. He, he was a hard worker and a great asset and always going to be dearly missed. And he is, but he was a dear friend to me. So I'd just like to, to put those condolences out to the family and friends of the Powell family. Thank you.
Yeah, very much so. I was going to mention Lee Powell's family. Had an opportunity to go and speak with the family and express the board's condolences. He will be greatly missed. He worked at our shop on our trucks and heavy equipment and things. And I just want to share a quick story about Lee Powell because he, he was working on a brand new mowing tractor that we had purchased, and he wanted to show me a couple of things he'd done to this tractor. And I went over and he started pointing some fabrication he'd done to the tractor. And I thought, when he was talking, we was looking at the wrong tractor, because we bought two. And, and everything looked factory to me, everything. And I said, Lee, are we looking at the right tractor? This all looks factory. He said, yeah, this, this brace here and this arm here. And I said, wow. I said, that looks like it came from the factory. The craftsman and his skill, everything was painted back. I mean, the welds, the, everything was just phenomenal. So he was a fifteen-year veteran of our county. He had just hit the fifteen-year mark. He will be greatly missed. He was a phenomenal employee and coworker of the county, and our condolences to his wife and their children. And he will be greatly missed, and so very much appreciate his service to this community. Thank you for being here tonight. This is a great turnout. I know you probably don't want to be here every two weeks and hear all these resolutions, but we do stream this live on Facebook, and we usually have a lot of people participate. Also, our agenda, the team works very hard to get the agenda posted on our website a week ahead of time. So Thursday, last week, we posted this agenda and the packet of information to give everybody time to review and understand, reach out to the district commissioners with questions concerned. So we've got a very good transparent process, and we've got a great team. And so thank you each and all for being here tonight. At this time, our next item of business, I'd like to make a motion. We have some items for an executive session that we'll need to enter into dealing with personnel, real estate, and legal matters. So I make that motion. Do we have a second to go into executive session?
Sorry.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We stand adjourned at this time. Okay, I'm going to call this back to order. It is January the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. It is ten thirty-three PM. We have just come out of executive session. There's no further action at this time of the board from executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.